Call the Putnam County delegation to order. If we could all please stand for the invocation led by Senator, Representative Payne.
Got a promotion, all right, great. Stand here to me, please. Lord, we ask for your blessing today over our delegation meeting. Help us to hear the concerns and requests of our community, have the ability to move and increase Putnam County forward as we work on the quality of life in Putnam County. Today, we ask for blessings over our country, especially our military and first responders. And, Lord, also today, we ask for special blessings for the Martinez family, Danny Martinez family. Give them strength and comfort in the days to come. In your name we pray, amen.
You guys will please stay standing. We're going to do a moment of silence for the Danny Martinez family who passed away yesterday.
Last night.
Last night. So, please stand in a moment of silence. Amen. I will lead us in the pledge, and the flag is right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Great, thank you.
Danielle, please call the roll.
Senator Hudson?
Here.
Representative Payne?
Here.
Aquorum is present.
All right, first, we'll do some introductions led by Representative Payne.
Thank you, Chair. So, great to see all of you today. Thank you for coming. We've got a fairly long list. I know the Chair will give you directions on speaking time, but let me just say it's been an honor and privilege. This is kind of like my farewell opportunity in Putnam County. And we'll review some other items towards the end of the day, towards the end of the meeting that I think are beneficial to the community to know, especially about Senator Hudson and his tenure in the legislature. So, I still represent District 20, which is a center of the district, Putnam County. It moved from 19 to 20, and now is all of Putnam, portions of St. John's County, the same portion of Clay County that had previously, all the way down to Ocala and North Marion. So, thank you for being here today and look forward to having a successful and enjoyable day.
Great, thank you, Representative Payne. For those who don't know me, I'm Senator Hudson. I was your senator when I first got elected with redistricting. I lost Putnam County but came back in the last election cycle. Was excited to have Putnam back. We did some big things last year that I think we're going to talk about at the end, but looking forward for more stuff to be done for Putnam County as we go forward. Before I start calling up speakers, if you'd like to address us and you're not on the agenda, please come forward with a speaker card and we'll put you at the end of the agenda in whatever order you give it to us. We have about, I'd say about 30 speakers today, so we're going to try and get through it. And we're going to give each speaker about three minutes each. And I think we have a clock that works. Yep, if you could silence your cell phones or put any device you have that makes noise when silent or stunned, we'd appreciate that. And I believe we have a clock that somebody's going to be working, but we're going to try and limit everybody to about three minutes. First, I have Putnam County Board of County Commissioners and all the commissioners, I believe, are here. You guys can come up, you are recognized. Y'all go ahead, then you can figure out the clock.
Yeah, we'll show you, we'll show you right after we get done.
Perfect, go ahead, you're recognized while we figure this out. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. We appreciate y'all coming once again to the county for, to listen to our presentations. We appreciate your support that you give us. Putnam County is excited for the growth potential in the coming years with Clay County to the north and St. John's to the east. We're well positioned for positive growth in our community, and we request this year to ensure our infrastructure is ready to support these needs that we know are coming. Our first request would be a Putnam County Water Treatment Center expansion. We want to upgrade the East Placa Regional Water Treatment Plant by constructing additional ribs, installing two 150,000 gallon treatment towers, and in placing the required connecting tubing. This would increase the plant's capability by 300,000 gallons of affluent water daily. Our current command center can handle an expansion which would service customers along the State Road 207 and County 207A, permitting residents in the proximity of the St. John's River to switch from sewer to septic. And environmental concerns brought forth by the Department of Environmental Protection. Before I move on, I would like to introduce some of the staff members that we have here with us today. Terry Suggs, Julianne Young, J.R. Grimes, and Sam Sullivan. And next, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Wilkinson.
Good afternoon. Our second request is for a Barden Bridge reconstruction. We've already had one. There's two bridges going into the Barden community. This is the first one. It's on 309D. It's an essential access to Barden. We had a state inspection done in February of 2023 in which we found that it was functionally obsolete. So, we're asking for state funding for that. That will provide access to Barden and covering the Rice Creek area. Thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Thank you for being here. Putnam County Public Safety Joint Training Facility, through acquisition and remoney of a properly seized property, Putnam County Emergency Services will establish a state-of-the-art joint training facility for use of Putnam County Fire Rescue, Putnam County Sheriff's Office, and other local first responder agencies, as well as vocational programs within high schools and community college. This facility is badly needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Payne and Senator Hudson. Our fourth request, Putnam County, over the last few years, has put a lot of money into our parks and our recreation facilities, upgrading the facilities from lighting to parking lots and things like that. One of the parks that we have not been able to fund is the Francis Park, and it's need tremendous upgrades. The upgrades that we're asking for is improved parking, rebuilding dugouts, increased lighting, safety features and things like that, just to make it a more safe and useful facility for our children and for adults that use that. A next request, and we have gotten some funding two years ago on this, is a South Putnam Drainage Project. We got about a half a billion dollars for that project, and we're 65% finished with the engineering of that project, and we're asking for more money to be able to finish that, because this will do about half of the project. And this is really a critical area in the Fruitland area off of 309 down to the St. John's River. So, we're asking for funding for the South Putnam Drainage. Thank you.
Before I finish up with our last request, I just need to correct an error that I made, a grave error, which was I didn't introduce my fellow commissioners at the beginning of this. And so, I'm Terry Turner, Chairman of the Board of the County Commission, Commissioner Bill Pickens, Commissioner Leota Wilkinson, and Commissioner Larry Harvey is with us today. So, with that, our last request is for a Putnam County Economic Growth Project that we're requesting, which is to update our current structure at the barge port for the docking facility. It's approaching a life expectancy age, and as y'all well know, we're in the latter part of getting a grant from the Corps of Engineers to possibly dredge the river. And we need to rebuild the bulkhead to get ready for that in our port project, along with the port would become operational for shallow water vessels between now and when the dredging is done in the future. So, that is an important, important part of our ask today to move that project forward to something that we've all committed to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next, I have Mayor Jamie Watts with the Town of Volaca.
Good afternoon, Senator Hudson and Representative Payne. Am I ready? I'm usually the one saying, you get three minutes. Good afternoon, Representative Payne and Senator Hudson. It's a pleasure to be here and thank y'all for coming to hear our needs today. I'm going to give you a couple of updates and pass this to the Chief, pass this to our Chief of Police. I have with me our Chief of Police, Mike Parath, and our Council President, Jessica Finch. First of all, we want to let you know that we have, through a series of JAG grants, received equipment and vehicles for our police department, and we're getting ready to hire our fourth police officer in the town, so we're going to try to move to 24-hour police protection. Our wastewater treatment plant that y'all were generous enough to give us 13 and a half million dollars for, the design has been completed and we're getting ready to move it forward. We have a couple of community development block grants. We have a $600,000 block grant for Otter Reed Water Meter System, and we also have a flood peril grant that we're doing for the town to deal with some of the flooding, especially in the Sportsman's Harbor area. We have been approved for an historical survey grant. Now, it's in your lap to see if y'all can help move that along for us. And then, we're also looking at a tree survey grant for the town. We also have two FERDAP grants that residents of the town would like to have pickleball, and it's kind of a big deal there. So, they're asking for a $200,000 FERDAP grant to do that, and we're asking for a second FERDAP grant for Jefferson Smith Park to do some much-needed improvements. But what I have to say is that this is the game changer for the town, because this takes us from 99,000 gallons a day of wastewater treatment to 250,000 gallons a day, and it's going to greatly expand our capacities down there and help us with the health of the river. So, we appreciate this project. This is the biggest project the town has seen in many years at 13 and a half million. With that, I will turn it over to our Chief of Police.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Later on this year, we'll be presenting appropriations request for a Volaca Municipal Public Safety Complex for the future expansion of the police department. When I started, we had one police officer working out of an office in City Hall. Now, we're moving to, hopefully shortly, four police officers, and we need space to grow and conduct true police business. So, you'll probably see that appropriations request come your way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Mayor Robbie Carrero with City of Volaca. Is Mayor here?
Good afternoon, Representative Payne and Senator Hudson. We're happy to be here. I am here with Commissioner Justin Campbell and interim City Manager Jonathan Griffith, and we surely appreciate your support over the past several years. We've made significant gains and progress. And I am going to turn it over to Mr. Griffith to give you our request.
Thank you, Mayor. Representative Payne, Senator Hudson, again, I'll echo the Mayor's comments. Thank you for your continued support. What you're going to see here is a continuation of what we've been working on with you over the past few years. Our priority number one this year is potable water main line replacement in the sum of $7 million. We are fast approaching 20 miles completed to date, with another nine miles currently contracted and funded. The second priority is rural transportation improvements. You probably saw on your way into town, we got a lot of roads that need some attention. Over 90 miles of curb line, we're requesting 3.3 million. That is about half of the estimated annual amount to maintain the current roads in the city of Volaca. Priority number three, 10 police patrol cars in sum of 500,000. Again, we are a fiscally distressed community, and we need these cars to serve our community. And the final is $150,000 for cultural and recreation programming to primarily serve the demographic of over 55 and under 12 population. So, with that said, thank you again for your continued support, and specifically the 13 million we got last year.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Colonel Joe Wells, Putnam County Sheriff's Office.
First of all, welcome to Putnam County, and thank you for letting me speak on behalf of Sheriff Deloach, who is out of the state today. Our single largest need as far as the Sheriff's Office goes has really already been addressed, and that's our partnership with Putnam County Fire Rescue for that joint training and operational facility. We are incredibly space-starved at this point and only really continue to operate through the generosity of the Putnam County School District, who's loaning us spaces in a lot of their schools. But as their restructuring plan moves forward, a lot of those spaces will go away. So, that is our single biggest need. Secondly, kind of want to just thank you and give you a quick update. You know, the state did a, it was a huge favor last year, and I know, Representative Payne, you really spearheaded this with the large appropriation to deal with the reentry of our inmates once they leave our facility. Nancy Russo and her team and our partners from Stuart Marchmont, we'll readdress that in a minute. But, you know, just thank you for recognizing, you know, I use the analogy, you can, you could have a leak in your tire and continue to drive on it and drive on it and add air as you need, and nothing ever changes. And we have the same inmates that repeatedly come through our facility, and until we address the needs of those inmates, whether it be mental health, job training, substance use disorder, anger management, education, all of that stuff we're addressing inside our facility, and your appropriation and your help last year is going to allow this to carry on even once they leave our facility, so we can turn them into productive inmates. Probably the asset is probably the most personal to me, is I would really like for us to look at reconsidering the position that we took with communications operators and 911 center operators with the PTSD bill. You know, it's been a big benefit to our law enforcement officers, our first responders, firefighters, and paramedics, but we left out the heartbeat of that whole operation. These are the men and women that take these calls, that listen to the agony of someone threatening suicide or even committing suicide on the phone, someone trying to give CPR to a patient, you know, the domestic violence victim that our operators can hear being stabbed, and those leave lasting impacts on them. And just as a final example on that, you know, we have a staffing issue in our 911 center right now. That's not part of the ask. That's our problem. We've got a plan in place and we're fixing that. But as part of that, we've asked some of our deputy sheriffs to agree to obtain some level of training in our comm center and work overtime in there and to help feel the burden, the need there. So, as you probably are all aware, we had a horrible situation here recently in Putnam County where we lost a young lady after a lightning strike. Well, the person that actually took that call was a deputy sheriff, not a 911 operator, or was trained in it, but not one that works at full-time. And that call impacted him, and this is partially, you know, he says this, that call impacted him more than anything he has ever seen on the road. So, you have a deputy sheriff that's seen and done it all, but a call in our 911 center is what sticks with him this day. And so, really please just ask you to reconsider our stance on those communications operators, those public safety dispatch center operators across the state with the PTSD bill. Other than that, we're good, and thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Next, I'm Matt Metz, the public defender of the Seventh Circuit.
Good afternoon, Senator Hudson, Representative Payne. Thank you so much for being here. I wanted to first start off by thanking you for your work last legislative session, helping some of the state employees for getting the raises that we received. They've been extremely helpful in maintaining some of the employees that we have that likely would have already otherwise gone into private practice. And while I have lost one or two because I haven't been able to match salaries, it wasn't at nearly the levels I would normally expect based on the increases that's happening across the private era. I did want to come and mention two issues to you. First is one that I know brought to both your offices' attention, is circuit consolidation. This issue is currently going on across the state of Florida, where we may take circuits, the 20 we have, and break them down into much larger areas, but a smaller number. Right now, our Seventh Circuit, consisting of Putnam, Flagler, St. John's, and Volusia, does its best to maintain communication and coordination amongst these four counties. I think we do a pretty good job. If we start making larger circuits, we really risk losing a lot of that local representation. If we were to be absorbed into Jacksonville, Orlando, or even some of the metro areas down in Seminole County, we could expect to see a lot of our judges, a lot of the elected officials coming from those areas. A lot less likely to be traveling up here regularly like myself and Mr. LaRizza to maintain the communication that we have with some of these parties up here. We're also realized that after discussing the issue, a lot of the costs that are going to come from doing that conversion are going to come on the counties themselves. Putnam being a fiscally constrained county already does have some trouble maintaining the IT infrastructure that offices like ours need to push forward. And when we're looking at these upgraded systems, we're not talking about small upgrades. We're talking about merging databases with hundreds of thousands of pieces of data across different counties and different areas. We already, the Public Defender's Office handles over 30,000 cases per year, and we do that at quite a discount when you compare it to the private attorney's office. And we're doing it the best we can to make sure we're giving the best representation possible. If you add, go from four counties to six, to eight, to 10, we're going to have a sincere problem maintaining the level of oversight to give the constitutional responsibility that we need to it all of our clients. We don't want to become in Orlando or Miami. You know, Putnam has its own needs, and we want to be able to serve those as directly as possible. So, I very much appreciate if this issue does come before the legislature this year, that you vote no on it or make sure that you discuss it with the Office of the Public Defender and the state attorneys. I know they've both already come out against it as a whole. And lastly, I do want to point out that the Office of the Public Defender and all the public defenders across the state are going to be asking to move our starting salaries up. Currently, we're approximately $10,000 less per person than the state attorney's office in this circuit. We've done a really good job recruiting. I myself have been on the phone and the email trying to get as many new students, sometimes offering a job as much as a year in advance, just to ensure that we're going to be well-staffed, but that's not always going to be available. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Matt Reynolds, the Clerk of Circuit Court and Comptroller.
Good afternoon, Senator Hudson and Representative Payne. Thank y'all for coming this afternoon. I'm going to keep my comments short and sweet. I'd like to just take a moment to thank Senator Hudson for your filing Senate Bill 1130 last year, and that was a tremendous, tremendous help for us clerks. And it really helped to offset some of the revenue loss that we saw through the tort reform bill, so very, very much appreciated for that, sir. Thank you. And we'll have more details. We'll be working with both of your offices this year as we get closer into legislative session on more detailed things that we'd like to see. But I wanted to come and publicly thank both of you for helping with that last year. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Next, we have Linda Myers, the Tax Collector.
Good afternoon. Rep. Payne, Senator Hudson. Pleasure to be with you, staff.
Rep. Payne, Senator Hudson, pleasure to be with you and staff. Thanks for the opportunity to present before you in our own community. I am here as the Tax Collector of Putnam County. It's my pleasure. As well, I have with me Brenda Bridges, who is the Deputy Tax Collector. Please know that either one of us are available for anything during the next session and of course during the year. I am delighted to be here on behalf of our amazing tax collector team, and if we weren't doing a good job, I know you would be hearing about it. So it is our pleasure to try to keep those phone calls on our call center line. I've given you and your staff a copy of our statistical data of where we work with, and unbelievably or not, I did not keep a copy. I gave them all out. But one side, I was too over anxious. One side is what we do here at the local level for our local taxing authorities, which I know you're familiar with. The other side, though, is all the state agencies that we represent. And I know most of you know that, but it never hurts to remind you of, we are the face, and that was such a smart move years ago, to bring state government to your own counties because the convenience to the citizen when they get the state services. So we're pleased to do that. Now, as you can imagine, most folks know us as the DMV Office. That is our major function here at the state level. So please know we are proud to serve in that capacity. I do want to give a shout out to our new director, Dave Kerner. If you've had the chance to meet him, he's been there a year now. He's brought a great new perspective coming from his background in law enforcement and his private sector experience to look at the customer service, to see where, where the most efficient location of functions is, whether it's at the county level, whether it's at state offices, and/or whether it's in Tallahassee. So we're looking forward to working with him. You should see, again, last year we did a joint bill with him, the Tax Collectors Association. You should see that, us both working again in a similar direction. Great decision on him. Last year, the sheet I gave you had actually financial impact to the state from our offices. This year, because our year end just ended 10 days ago, or six days ago, we don't have that data for you. But I will pledge to get to your staff the statistical financial impact of those state agencies at the county level prior to session. And speaking of session, thanks for the successful session in 2023. And we look forward to, I know everybody's looking forward to great things in 2024. Don't feel the pressure, I'm sure, right? I do want to bring one thing up that is surfacing statewide and here in Putnam County. I think we have about 30 instances of PACE. I'm sure you're familiar with PACE. It stands for, if I can remember, and I'm going to actually look at my notes, property assessed clean energy. Been around for a long time legislatively, I think in the 2000, 2009. However, last October, there was a twist in how it's operating in the state. And so for the first time, we have it here in Putnam County and many of your counties, I suspect all of them, truthfully. Bradford County just went to court two weeks ago on it. So we may need help legislatively. So I just want to prepare you. We'll probably meet with staff one-on-one to try to go through the deliberations on that. Short of that, I heard my buzzer go, and I know there's lots of people here waiting to speak to you about all the needs in our community. Thanks again for what you do for us. And please know, if you're looking for the local take on any state agency we deal with, reach out to us. We certainly hear about it, and we'll be glad to share in a respectful way. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Charles Overdurf, the Putnam County Supervisor of Elections.
Good afternoon. Two brief comments. The first one is, of course, I just want to say personally, thank you to the Senator. Thank you, Representative Payne, for all that you all have done during your time of service, and especially your leadership. We all have to deal with the idea of term limits, but there are some times that it's a negative, and I think both of you fit that category because I think you've done a great job. The other aspect that I'll deal with is just the election part of it. As you all know, next year is extremely busy for us. We have the three major elections, and we're going to do the very best we can to continue for Florida, the state of Florida and Putnam County to shine throughout the nation. So I would ask you in January, if there is going to be any dealings with the elections area, please keep it to a minimum if possible, just as we're still dealing with the last three sessions, you know, with almost 100 pages each time of changes. So we're going to do the best we can, but we just ask you to try to make it as minimal as possible if it's in your area to do. Thank you.
Perfect. I would agree with you. I think you'll need a break for the election time, for the session that comes. Next, we have President Joe Pickens, St. John's River State College.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I too want to talk about last session before I talk about this one. Senator Hudson, at the last minute, frankly, you helped us with a PICO form that we had to have in order to have a project be considered. And then it was the Senate that initially funded that project at $12 million that allowed the House, through Representative Payne's personal efforts, to have the House match that and then bring it all the way up to $34 million. A classic example of two, our two representatives working together to try to make our community better. A $34 million transformation of our campus that would have had a lifetime of impact. Unfortunately, it didn't, it didn't survive executive scrutiny. So this year, we have repackaged it and eliminated the issues that we believe the executive branch had. I've given that form to your aides, each of you, and they'll be emailed to you on Monday. I want to ask that you would file those for us, please. Next, the last time that the meal allowance and mileage for state employees, my employees, the superintendent's employees, law enforcement employees, county employees in the FRS was increased, you were four years removed from high school and six years removed from even thinking about entering the Florida House of Representatives, Senator. I was in the Florida House. That's how long ago it was, 18 years without an increase. It is not fair for my employees to be sent off on college business and not be able to drive their own vehicles because the mileage reimbursement is 18 years behind inflation, much less being forced to order a Happy Meal at lunch because that's all the state will pay for in this day and age. I'd ask you to strongly consider raising those rates. I've submitted a document that tells you what those rates would be if you just kept up with inflation and nothing else, and would ask each of you in your respective chambers to consider doing that. Last, I can look around with confidence and know that I'm the only person in this room that can look at both of you and say, I know how you feel. I know exactly what it's like to be sitting in one of those chairs, knowing it's my last legislative delegation meeting in Putnam and Clay and Bradford, just like you're going to do. Travis, you have been a friend of Putnam County, whether you actually represented this county or not, and I appreciate it more than you would know. Thank you. Bobby, you and I know that I started recruiting you in 2007 to succeed me. Although it took nine years, it was worth the wait. I can't tell you as a former member, I can tell you this. I just hope in my heart that Kelly Smith was as proud of me and the job I tried to do succeeding him as I am in the job that you did in succeeding me. It's what a representative, a public servant, I think, could hope for the most, especially when it's someone that you recruited. I don't want to be a county or a city commissioner. It's a thankless job. But that job, gentlemen, mostly is at home. And you sleep in your own bed every night at home, you're with your family, and you're in your community. Not so with you. The toll that that takes on elected officials at the state level, I understand. We use the term "thank you for your service" a lot, and it's well-deserved, especially to whom it's usually directed, our first responders and our law enforcement. Today, in closing, gentlemen, I'm going to look at you, both of you, in the eye and tell you, sir, thank you for your service.
Thank you, President Pickens, for your kind words out of, from both of us. Thank you very much. Guys, it just goes to show, if you talk good about us, we let you keep going up here. So next, I have Superintendent Rick Surrancey.
And you all are recognized.
One thing a politician doesn't like is to have laryngitis, because we always like to talk, but bear with me for just a minute. And thank you, Representative Payne, Senator Hudson, for being here. And especially thank you for your support last year on our appropriation request, funding our CTE program at Crescent City Junior/Senior High. That's going to transform that community. And also funding our special facilities project at Crescent City Junior/Senior High. And one thing I would ask, a big ask, is that as we go through this process of building a new high school, there are going to be some cost overruns, since we initially planned this, that will severely impact the project. And we are going to be coming, Mr. Bowling and myself will be coming to Tallahassee, meeting with you after we get these cost projections from our architect. So there will be some things that we want to, we will need to continue the project just because of, you know, steel and concrete, as you well know, that are going up. So we will be in contact with you during committees and bringing up to date on that. So if you just help us, you know, navigate that, that would be great. And this time, I want to ask Laura France, Assistant Superintendent, to come up and talk to you about our, again, a future request for an appropriation. So thank you again for being here.
Representative Payne, Senator Hudson, thank you very much. What you'll be seeing from us is very similar to what you have supported us for in the last couple of years. We would like to expand our career opportunities for the city of Palaca, the students here. And that will, last year, you helped us support Crescent City Junior/Senior High School, the year before, Interlock and Junior/Senior High School. Most of this is to bring our programs up to current trade standards, as well as increase some of the opportunities for our students in town. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Next, we have Mark Lemare with the President and CEO of United Way of St. John's. Recognized.
Good afternoon, Senator Hudson, Representative Payne. Thank you for this opportunity to briefly create greater awareness about United Way and our work in this community. It's important to us that you have an understanding about our role as an investor into the nonprofit network here in Putnam County. My name is Mark Lemare. I'm the new president for United Way of St. John's, and I'm joined by our board president, President Pickens. And I also want to acknowledge Matt Reynolds, who's here today as a member of our board as well. You do have some materials that I shared with staff, but I just wanted to cover a couple of quick items for you, as well as for audience members. We have been serving St. John's County since 1957, but we started serving Putnam County four years ago. And though we've been serving Putnam County for that time, we do understand that the community is still getting to know us as an organization, and we're still getting to know Putnam County as well. At our core, we are more than a fundraising organization. We're a collaborator and really an investor in the nonprofit network. We measure our success not in terms of how much money we've raised, but really in how we've helped improve people's lives. Our three priorities as an organization is really the health, education, and financial stability of our neighbors. And I just wanted to briefly lift up some of our work from our last fiscal year, which wrapped up June 30th. There is no ask, and I'm about to present just some greater awareness. This last year, we invested $140,000 into 12 nonprofit partners for services addressing the health, education, and financial stability needs of residents. We also gratefully, we secured an $81,000 grant from National Red Cross to support Putnam County's new long-term recovery group, and we allocated $10,000 to the English-language learners program in South Putnam to purchase iPads for students. That's a little bit about our role as a funder. And beyond our grant-making, though, a few things that you may not be aware of. Through our RealSense Tax Program, volunteers helped, here in Putnam County, 341 individuals file their taxes for free, helping to achieve $460,000 in refunds back into this county. We also helped 866 residents save $104,000 in prescription costs through our single-care partnership. And one of these, one of these bullets here I wanted to lift up, we do contract with United Way of Northeast Florida to make available here throughout Putnam County the 211 Social Service Line. That is available countywide. It's a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week hotline for residents. And also, we expanded our agency network this last year in Putnam County with the addition of two new certified partner agencies. And lastly, I just really want to thank you both. We were fortunate this year to be included in state funding for our RealSense Tax Program, and we look forward to sharing about the results of that effort. And as an organization, if you have any questions about our work, or you see ways that we could better serve or better partner, we're wide open. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Shay Starling, Northeast Florida Education Consortium.
Good afternoon. On behalf of the small and rural school districts, our organization has the privilege of serving. We simply want to thank you. Thank you for always having an open door. Thank you for understanding that these districts have unique needs and circumstances, and thank you for always championing their interest. We look forward to working with you in next session. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Les Sims with the Education Foundation.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Senator and Representative, for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Les Sims, and I'm chairman of the Education Foundation of Putnam County. The sole purpose of the Education Foundation is to promote and fund the teachers and students of Putnam County by utilizing different sources, avenues, that the district can access. In 2022, we were able to return $92,000 back to our community by funding multisensory training programs, as well as a Putnam Grants for Great Ideas program. Total impact of that right there was 1,800 students and teachers alone. All teachers were able to access that grant if they wanted to. In 2023, we're proud to say that we've raised $167,000 that we will return back to our community through programs like this. In 2024, we are respectfully requesting a $337,000 appropriation to help create and expand an aviation academy, where we will fund flight hours for students who can't afford them. When the students leave the academy, sometimes that is because they can't afford the flight hours. And so we want to help them get to that next level and earn that pilot's license. Part of that funding will also go to training for classroom and technical training to work on these aircraft. Also, part of that appropriation request is a nursing program funding. And what we found with meetings with HCA is, you know, when we have nurses go into the training programs, sometimes life gets in the way, and they can't even afford transportation to get to the hospital, or if they have other clinicals to do in Gainesville, they have to lead the program. I mean, so we are setting up a program to have subcontractors transport these nurses and get them into the industries where we need them most. So like I said, we respectfully request your consideration for the appropriation of $337,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Breck Sloan with the ARC of Putnam County.
Good afternoon, Senator, Representative. I want to first start with thanking you both. Your service to our community, Putnam County owes you a great debt of gratitude, as I do. Thank you very much. Update, last year, we are grateful for the appropriation to update the ARC facilities, Whittaker Center, also the pool, which is a unique situation with Putnam County Parks and Recs operating it. As you know, that serves not only our clients, it also serves our public, all of our swim teams. Every youth swim training day program is held at this pool, and it's critical infrastructure for our community. Update as our times, the engineering and design is underway, costs are escalating. I'm not sure exactly where it will be, but we're excited about the project and working hard to keep the costs down and bring it back in. Secondly, I would be remiss if I didn't say that the ARC, this is statewide, is in a desperate need to increase Medicaid waiver rates, skyrocketing operating expenses such as insurance, feud, fuel, closure of program services throughout the state. As an example, the ARC of Putnam County, which has never had, in its 50 years of service, a negative year, anticipates a $500,000 deficit. These are simply unsustainable, not just for our organization, but across These are simply unsustainable, not just for our organization, but across the state. And I'm sure you all will be working diligently to address that in Tallahassee. And then finally, transportation. We are looking to update our handicap fleet. These are our most critically medically fragile clients. The replacement of these vans includes wheelchair lifts, ramps, securement devices, and the transport of persons with disabilities. Mobility allows the support of medically fragile clients who may be confined to wheelchairs for their medical appointments, basic life functions, critical services such as evacuation and life safety services. The upgrades are aimed at safety, security of our most vulnerable citizens, also in an attempt to reduce the increasing expense of maintenance and operating an aging fleet. We recognize that there are other funding available and we are working diligently to acquire some of those. Anything we can get would help. And also know that this may be a multi-year transition of trying to update these fleets. So thank you very much again. Appreciate your service.
Thank you. Next I have Jessica Finch with the St. John's Riverkeeper. Okay, that's fine.
Good afternoon, Senator Hudson and Representative Payne. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. Today I'm presenting on behalf of the St. John's Riverkeeper, which is a nonprofit organization that covers the whole 300-plus mile expanse of the St. John's River watershed. I am specifically the Putnam County Community Engagement Coordinator. So I represent our region right here. At the last delegation meeting in January, we presented concerns about the health of the St. John's River and the disappearance of the eelgrass. We know that after Hurricane Irma, over 90% of the eelgrass disappeared. We are seeing hopeful signs. After the last delegation meeting, our organization planned for a couple of months and started our first quarterly SAV, Save the Grasses Expedition. So every quarter, we spend four days on the river. We are monitoring sites in an 80-mile stretch, ending in Lake George. We have 13 sites currently that we are monitoring the growth of the eelgrass. We're adding two more sites. We'll be going out again in October, the actually October 17th, for four days, and we would invite you to participate in any way that you would, you would see fit. We know that the eelgrass is very, very important to the health of the river. It is still undergoing impacts from multiple stressors. If you look at the first page of your, your folder, you'll see a photo of, an aerial photo of a, an area that is fenced up at Dancy Point, which is just south of Federal Point. The eelgrass you will see is flourishing there. That's all fenced. And then on the outside of that, I don't know if the picture depicts it well, but it is still being, it is still at levels probably a couple of inches or less. And that is due, that primarily is due to some of the grazers that we face. After Irma, as you know, the, we have multiple grazers. We have multiple issues that affect the eelgrass levels. But fencing it off, we're learning on each of these expeditions. We don't just go and take a visual look. We're in the water. We are testing the water. We are measuring the length of the eelgrass, the density of the eelgrass, and we have committed to doing four more years of that at the minimum. What I would say is in August at our last expedition, we began and met with FWC. We have started a working relationship with them and they have, their goal is to fence at least 1,000 acres. We have over 100 and, I think there's over 130 acres currently fenced. So we would ask for your support in their request to add more fencing, especially in Putnam County. We know that this is not the, the only thing that will help the eelgrass, but it is a start and we have to learn from what we don't have. So I would ask and encourage your support on, and funding their request. Thank you.
Next I have Phil Leary with the Governmental Affairs Land Use and Real Estate.
Mr. Chairman, Senator, good afternoon. And I'm going to take a personal point of privilege as a school board member, which I'm not speaking about today, but I do want to support what Dr. Serency and his team are advocating for this session. And from the bottom of my heart and the other school board members, thank you for the funding that we received last year. I mean, it was just probably the largest funding for schools in the history of the county, and we certainly appreciate that. But today I'm going to talk to you about something else that... So as I think both of you know, and I want to say that it was my privilege early on and when both of you were deciding to run. Senator, I had lunch with you at Jim's over in Elkton and you went on to be the workhorse I knew you would be. And Representative, our breakfast at Lori's, I think, I hope helped in your decision and both of you have been outstanding, not just for the county, but on policy statewide. We need a change in policy statewide. Under Chapter 163 of the, of the Florida statutes, the Growth Management Act, the family homestead provision has gotten convoluted and making it difficult in some respects for local governments to implement a property rights-based transfer of, of homestead properties from owners of families to heirs. Currently, the, as you can see, it says the local government may include it in its comprehensive plan, the provisions. And so we, my clients would like to see that changed to show and then add at the end of that first paragraph, the sentence, "Family homestead transfers are exempt from local government subdivision and lot split regulations." Recently, one of my clients spent, or her grandkids spent over $10,000 to subdivide two two-acre tracts in a 28-acre cow pasture with paved road frontage to be able to do the homestead transfer. The county doesn't seem to be able to get their land development regulations revised. I've been hearing for almost three years now, they're revising them. This is not a difficult thing to do. As a former county planning director in Clay County, we had a very simple process. But this is a Burt Harris private property rights issue and something that local governments, and I'm sure if it's happening here, it's happening in other counties across the state, that needs to be clarified. And this language will do it. And I hope that I can work with you during the session for us to find a bill that we can amend it on to and resolve this problem and, and help a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Susan King with Feeding Northeast Florida.
Hi, I am not Susan King. My name is Coleman Shepherd and I'm speaking on her behalf, on behalf of the food bank today. Thank you for taking the opportunity to hear us out. First and foremost, our role as a food bank is a support role here in Putnam County. We work with 11 different partners in 2022 to distribute 1.3 million pounds of food. That's largely due to the work that those partners do in the county, getting that food into people's bellies that need it the most. We are continuing to expand in the county by expanding not just our partnerships, but creative programs to help fund economic development initiatives like the LFPA funding through FDACs, where we purchase from Putnam farmers to put food into Putnam plates. That being said, fighting hunger is an uphill battle in Putnam specifically. It has one of the highest food insecurity rates in Florida at 15.4%. That jumps up to 21.7% for children. And when we talk about why people are going hungry and facing these issues, it's because there's a 23.7% poverty rate. Again, that jumps up to 34.6% when we talk about children. 63% of households in Putnam are Alice households. Now that means they're asset limited, income constrained, and employed. These are working families that are struggling to make ends meet and put food on tables. So we will continue to look for partnerships. There's no specific asks today. This is purely informational and just sharing our experience. But, but we always look for opportunities to continue to support our partners here in Putnam. And I think you have a handout that lists the 11 partners on the back. But there's, there's a gap that needs to be addressed and it's going to take collaboration between the public, private, nonprofit, and for-profit sectors to make sure that we are not just feeding hungry people, but making sure that they have the resources they need to feed themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Boyd Thompson, Executive Director of Ride Solution.
Representative Payne and Senator Hudson, I, on behalf of Ride Solution and the transportation disadvantaged population of Putnam County, I want to thank you for last year's appropriation. Generations of drivers and mechanics will thank you too for not having to start morning rollout in a dirt lot that floods every time it rains. This year's request has to do with the long-term impact of Medicaid reform on our in-county routes. Those routes were built as a result of the coordination of the human service revenue in the county. And as a result of Medicaid reform in 2019 and 21 and 2019 through 21, we lost about 750,000 in Medicaid and MedWaiver funding. That loss and the accompanying loss, those were local funds. That loss and the accompanying loss of our ability to match FDOT funding will force the closure of the in-county routes sometime this year. That, those routes, that in-county service will then be replaced with dial ride van type demand response service, which is much less efficient in terms of producing transportation. We estimate that we will see a 20 to 30,000 trip reduction over the course of this next year. This last year, we did 70,000 trips, so significant reduction. Currently, we are able to do all of our medical requests and some shopping requests. We estimate that the loss of 20,000 trips will force us to prioritize medical and eliminate shopping. So we have been in communication with FDOT since December of last year on this issue. They have not been able to come up with any stopgap funding. And their statement to us, Central Office, stated to us that we needed to ask our legislators for an earmark as there were other rural CTCs throughout Florida that had been negatively impacted by Medicaid reform in much the same way as, as we have. Again, thank you for what you've already done for us.
Thank you. Next I have Timothy, is that?
Hotelling.
Hotelling. Sir, recognized.
Good afternoon. I'm Tim Hotelling from San Mateo. I have the privilege to live on the banks of the St. John's River. Part of that privilege when I got here was there's all kinds of eelgrass and manatees and bass and gators and all of that. Now there's none. So I've been up here before you for many, many times. A little bit of a footnote, you've heard all of the cities and the counties with their asks, and there wasn't a word made mention of the St. John's River. And it's sort of a shame because there's an awful lot of tourist dollars that come in here and are in jeopardy of not coming in here for not paying attention to the, the river. The water management, part of those things shows the, the water management district has since 2015 made careful measurement of my, of the amount of eelgrass. And on those two charts there, it shows in red and orange color, that's where there is none. Manatees eat, what, half, three quarters of their weight every day. They need something to eat. Bass need some place to go. No bass, you don't have to worry about poaching, that's for sure. The shame of it is, I've pestered Representative Payne's office long and hard during the last session when you were trying to get money together. And I was led to the Excel sheet that talks about all of the money that's identified, and there wasn't a single nickel that I could find that had either the word St. John's River on it or eelgrass or anything of the like. And from what I could deduce, it takes a non-government organization asking for money. And we're 12 counties wide, you know, 12 counties are all part of this river. It's hard to gather that many people together, which to me means that it's left up to folk like you. That first picture there of Dan Colderman's fencing down in Lake George, you should get together and listen. He's got some really fun stories about gators and fences dying and all of that. But all of that fence was donated from the Fish and Wildlife Commission Foundation. That's all X, no tax dollars. As near as I can tell, there's no tax dollars that have been applied to this problem. And more critically, there's no recognition. If there was a recognition that we have the problem that we have, then your counties and your, your cities would, would at least make mention to it, and they don't. Which leaves me to believe that unfortunately, it's up to you and all of your, your colleagues in the 12 counties that, that touch the river. Actually, I had a, a little bit of a thought. All of these professionals that you pay to monitor and, and take care of fish and everything, you, you could use the power of the purse and choke their wages off and make sure that they're all immediately become aquatic habitat rehabilitation specialists and unleash that army on that river.
Thank you for your time. I will say, I don't know, let Representative Payne talk as well, but we were able to secure money in FWC's budget at the 11th hour for eelgrass restoration, and they've been working on it since we left Tallahassee. I actually spoke to someone that's in coordination with them as recently as Tuesday, who said it's going well and they're asking for more money next, next year.
Well, it isn't fully publicized, and I know Representative Payne's aware of it and is working on it. I'm not...
Let me ask you, are you going to be around after the meeting? Because I've got a, a list of things I'm going to talk about in the meeting. Some of it is misinformation that you have. Some of it is misinformation that you've, you've presented today. And I will go through that list if you want to stay around and listen. I'll show you some of the things that we've done in my world as a chairman for everything water in Florida, and the media doesn't pick up on it and depends on where your sources of information come from. But it's pretty shocking to see what we're doing in universities, in laboratories, in eelgrass research. And all we get from the media is how many manatee are dying every day. Manatee success story in, in Florida is amazing. 20 years ago, less than 1,000, now over 10,000. But we all hear about how there's no seagrass and they're starving. And as we heard earlier, there's grazers on eelgrass and seagrass, especially eelgrass. It's not all manatee. A lot of it's turtles.
Oh, absolutely. I don't, I don't have any manatees coming by anymore. That's, that's not an issue. That's not an issue.
Next, I have Adriana Tran with the Community Legal Services.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, and thank you to Representative Payne for his patience for listening to this for the second time. First of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity to be here to speak in front of the Putnam County delegation, as well as all the community members who came today. My name is Adriana Tran, and I am the Director of Government Relations for Community Legal Services. We are the largest legal aid firm here in the state of Florida, and we are the eighth largest here in mid-Florida, so that includes your Morgan &amp; Morgans, your Dan Newlands, all of them. We provide no-cost legal aid services to those most vulnerable across our 12 counties, so that includes Brevard, Citrus, Flagler, Hernando, Lake Marion, Orange, Osceola, Putnam, Seminole, Sumter, and Volusia, so it's quite a bit of area. Last year, we served roughly 10,000 Floridians, with about 250 of them being from right here in Putnam County. Our only ask is that you learn a little bit about the work that we do and encourage those in your districts to come to us early before it's too late. We can provide them better outcomes for their legal issues if they come early. So at CLS, our duty as a legal aid is to ensure that citizens are given the freedoms, liberties, and opportunities afforded to them under the courts by the Constitution, so that includes access to a lawyer, knowing their rights and understanding the law, and meaningful engagement with the judicial system. We typically serve clients below the 125% federal poverty level. We also serve domestic violence survivors and elderly citizens at any income level. Not only that, but we act as a guard against economic downturn, so we keep seniors in their homes, we help veterans get their disability, and we help domestic violence survivors. We actually had somebody here in Putnam County who hadn't seen her children for 10 years because she incorrectly filed her paperwork when she filed for divorce. We ended up being able to help her file that paper properly and get her children back. So that was a phenomenal story. And, you know, with that in mind, we would appreciate if you would consider us a resource. If any of you staff ever have people coming to you with civil legal issues and they may qualify for our services, please contact me directly, and I can help you guys out. Their team will let you know, they've been sending some people our way. So thank you again for all of your hard work and Godspeed into the next legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Wendy Hansford with Goodwill of North Florida.
Good afternoon, and thank you for hosting today's meeting. I'm Wendy Hansford with Goodwill Industries of North Florida. Goodwill's mission is to remove barriers to employment through training, education, and career opportunities for the communities we serve. Goodwill is invested in expanding our missions in Putnam County to remove these barriers. Goodwill is a second chance employer and employs 20 at our Palaca store. In 2021, Goodwill began revitalizing Take Stock and Children. Take Stock and Children's mission is to break the cycle of poverty through education by providing mentors, scholarships, and hope to our students. In the past two years, our local program has grown from two to 62 students, and nine high school graduates have received two-year Florida prepaid foundation scholarships to a Florida college or technical school. In 2022, Goodwill implemented their A-Step program in Putnam. A-Step program aims to provide adults access to post-secondary education opportunities to elevate earning potential and job security by securing industry credentials and certifications. To date in Putnam, 15 adults have completed our A-Step certification programs, and 13 are currently enrolled. Goodwill has also partnered with St. John's River State College to offer a basic manufacturing program, which serves as a talent pipeline to our local companies. All students who completed the manufacturing certification program were offered full-time employment with local companies. And in 2023, third year in a row, we are expanding another mission, Good Career Center. Our Good Career Center is set to open at the end of November and will be in our soon-to-be remodeled store. Our Good Career Center will offer a no-cost, full-service career center for people who want to find the skills they need to obtain successful employment. Goodwill requests your support for appropriations to expand our A-Step and career training for individuals in Putnam County, and we will provide that information to you soon. Goodwill also asks for your continued support for Take Stock and Children. Our program relies on funds appropriated by the legislature to the Florida Department of Education each year for mentoring student assistance initiative grants and school and instructional enhancement grants. This funding allows us to continue impacting low-income students and their families in Putnam by providing take stock high school graduates with a guaranteed post-secondary pathway and changing the conversation with our local students from if I go to college to when I go to college. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Michelle Meyer, the Mayor of Crescent City.
Senator Hudson and Representative Payne, we thank you both for this opportunity. We also thank you tremendously, you, Representative Payne, for championing our two water main issues last year, and Senator Hudson for helping pass those through. They were tremendous asset that will be to our community. With me today, I have Charles Rudd, he's our city manager. We also have our Commissioner-elect, BJ Laurie. And two of our Commissioners unfortunately could not be here. They are with the Florida League of Cities, working on legislative issues there. So with that, this year, we're bringing back to you our emergency response station. We had that last year as one of our requests. We're asking $2 million for this. This will house an ambulance for Crescent City. It will also house the sheriff substation that we have there, excuse me, I'm sorry, our sheriff substation, who provides our law enforcement for our community. Also, the one thing that we do have is our infrastructure needs, and so you will find we have our water treatment plant distribution loop we're asking for, that's $1 million. Our North Water Tower water main improvement, that's $1 million. Our second in Grove Avenue water main improvement, that's $1.2 million. Our South Water Tower lead abatement, that's a $200,000 request, and our Lake Street water main improvement, which is a $1.5 million request. What we're finding is that with our new influx of people that are moving into our community, in order to meet those needs, those water needs, and the pressure needs for the high fire hydrants that we have got, these projects are beneficial to that. It will serve, right now, we have a community that is trying to be established on the south end of town. They're having some difficulties with our fire hydrants being able to meet their needs. We also have an expansion of our recovery program on the north end of town, and that's going to add 75 new jobs to Crescent City, which is a huge benefit to us. But again, these projects will help with that, as well as the influx of other people moving into our communities as we see new development. There's a lot going on down in South Putnam. We're proud to be down there and represent the commission and the citizens of South Putnam, and we thank you for everything that you both do for us. I know that Charles has already prepared all the documentation. He's got to tweak a few things, so we'll make sure we get it both to your offices in a timely fashion this year. So again, thank you both for your service and for all you do for Putnam County.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to remind everybody, I'm in speaker cards now for people who filled stuff out. If you haven't and you'd like to speak, I'll get with our staff over here and we'll get you to fill something out. First, I have Amanda Hayes, and it doesn't say an organization, so I assume, Amanda, you're representing yourself. You are perfect, and you're here to talk about APD funding. Thank you very much.
I apologize, I didn't bring one of these for everyone.
That's fine.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, so this is my first time ever doing this, so I apologize if I'm a little shaky. Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you all today. My name is Amanda Hayes, and I am a mother and an advocate. So I'm going to start with a personal story.
You take as much time as you want, okay?
I apologize.
No, you're fine.
Thank you. All right. My son is Jaden Brown. He is 14 years old. He will be 15 next month. Back in, for the past five years or so, about five years ago, he started developing aggressive behaviors. We dealt with them the best we could with medication and just whatever we could. So back in January, I made the hardest decision that he needed to go somewhere that had 24-hour So I reached out to APD finally in March, because he has insurance, so I did my due diligence. I figured all of that out. Insurance was not a resource, so I reached out to APD in hopes that they would be a partner, and it has been hard. I initiated the crisis process, and in June, we were denied. I then filed for the appeal, and our appeal hearing has been rescheduled three times and is now set for December. We're still dealing with, you know, life, and I did reach out to you, Representative Payne, and got in touch with Chondell, and you have been an angel, and I thank you so much. The problem is, is that every agency that I have reached out to in the state of Florida directs me to APD. I've been there, and I know one of the main, or my main ask is adding the Agency for Persons with Disabilities to the Social Services Estimating Conference. The second is fully funding the waiver. The waitlist is 10 to 15 years at a minimum. I'm not the only family. I know there are 180 children at Mellon Learning Center. That's just in our county, and that's not district-wide. These children are going to need help, you know. The last time that the waiver was fully funded, Jeb Bush was in office. It can be done. And then, the last thing is, State Bill 2510 was passed this last session, which contains the Managed Care Pilot Program. My other ask is, please say no to any other managed care bills, because it's not the answer. There was lawsuits that were settled this past summer because of managed care being responsible for putting children into nursing homes, and that's not okay either. These are all nonpartisan issues, you know. Developmental disabilities hit everybody. And, yeah, that's it.
Mrs. Hayes, if you don't mind, and I hope the question's not too personal, so you don't have to answer it, but was there a reason for the denial, other than they're on the waitlist?
So they told me that I had enough resources. I had already reached out to CARD. I have a seven-and-a-half-page report from Art Wallen, who's the Associate Director of CARD, in which I think three different times, he in bold and underlined states that Jaden needs to be placed on the waiver for residential care. And they, in their denial letter, say that CARD is addressing his behavior issues, and that also the school is addressing his behavior issues. I adore everyone at his school. His one-on-one is phenomenal. They just had to change because Jaden stands about this tall. I was going to bring him today, and that would have been a great time. But when he's having his episodes, they have to remove him from the classroom. He can't, because he's a danger to himself and others, and that's the criteria that I had applied for the crisis waiver for. And the statute is subjective, so if they, they also said I didn't have any police reports, Baker Act commitments, or DCF involvement. So I'm being penalized for trying to be the best mom I can.
Yes, ma'am, understand.
It's just, I have sent Chondell the denial letter, as well as my appeal, or my rebuttal to the denial, and all the other documentation, so if y'all need any of that, I'm willing to share.
Thank you. We can share it with our offices.
Thank you for being here today. We have heard, this is my third delegation meeting, and we've heard a lack of funding, full funding for APD, so it will be on our list that we hope to elevate this year and get some more results. So thank you for being here, thank you for patience, and God bless you.
Thank you, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have Nancy Russo with SMA Healthcare.
Good afternoon, Senator Hudson and Representative Payne. First of all, we'd like to thank you for allowing the recurring funding for the fact team for Putnam and St. John's. That's a much-needed service for that type of clientele. And as Colonel Wells previously mentioned, thank you for the appropriations, for the reentry programming. We are the other part of that recipient. We are going to be developing a residential program, and we have the planning for the renovations underway for that. So we hope to have the completion of the renovations by the end of this fiscal year. So this year's ask is for the operation funding. And the program will house up to 15 individuals for a 30- to 60-day stay, and it'll focus on strengthening their sobriety, either beginning or continuing medication-assisted treatment, working on skills that will allow the individual to be ready for reentry back into the community once they've successfully completed the program. The individuals will receive at least 14 hours of clinical programming every week, which includes the traditional individual-family group-type therapy, but will also be incorporating some more innovative modalities such as art and music therapies, movement therapy, and animal-assisted therapies. So the operation for this program is budgeted at $1.6 million per year. And again, we just thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Next, I have Melissa Ray.
Good afternoon. I want to thank Ms. Fay for getting us here at last minute, so excuse me if I'm a little shuffled up here. It is also my first time coming to a delegation, and I also have Ms. Taliesia Christopher with me. So my name is Melissa Ray. I am the Executive Director of the Nehemiah Project in Putnam County. We have done several things over the last decade to help improve recovery capital, but mainly with the adults in our community. A few years back, we stepped back and we realized that we have very little resources for our students, our youth, our teenagers, who are also struggling. Let me back up to say that I am a graduate of the University of North Florida with a bachelor's degree in nursing. I am a veteran of the United States Army. I am also an adult child of an alcoholic or dysfunctional family. I'm also the mother of an infant that is in heaven. I am a woman who had to learn late in life how to cope, how to communicate my hurts and my pains, and how to work through trauma that I experienced in my life that ultimately led to my using and misusing and abusing of prescription medication that ultimately landed me in prison, so which I am also a convicted felon. My goal, since I was released from prison in 2012, has been to help people not make the same mistakes that I made in my life by helping them learn how to cope, learn how to communicate. And so back up to a few years ago, realizing that we don't have anything available for our youth, it started with my own child, who is now almost 22, and he is in Gainesville going to college, but he struggled when he was 16 and 17, and we had nothing to offer him in order to help. And so, a few years ago, I was hired... And so, a few years ago, I was hired as a project coordinator for our statewide recovery community organization, which led me to experience several resources in the state of Florida, one of which was a recovery high school. We took the recovery high school model last year, and we altered it a little bit in order to open it up to students who have experienced adverse childhood experiences, students who need to learn coping, students who need to learn how to communicate. And we really focused on the trauma-informed care model at our school. And so not all students are using substances that need help. There's many ways that a youth tries to numb their pain. We have students who cut, and you'll never know, because the physical pain covers the emotional pain that they're experiencing and they're going through. And you know, every now and then, a city will have an experience, and all of a sudden the community wakes up, and they can no longer turn their head to the issues and the problems and the struggles that they're facing. And I believe with everything in me, that time is now for Putnam County. September 26th, we had an amazing young woman at 16-years-old who was struck by lightning. Two days later, God decided to take her home. That struck our community to the core. And students came out by the thousands hurting and struggling. And our school district does an amazing job helping our students and having programs for our students and having counselors for our students. But there are students that just can't make it in the public school setting. Last year alone, 39 students were expelled. I have one of those students with me from the year before. And she was in the program that we started last year. We had a graduate from our program last year. He is now in Tulsa Welding School. He was kicked out of five high schools. He had no hope without the Hope Center. He's also working at Home Depot. So if you stop at Home Depot in Putnam County, look up Demaris and tell him how proud you are of him, because he's now living a completely different life than he would've lived. Taliesia is also in our program. The problem is, last year, we did everything we could to keep the program running with no funding. And we did that for a year. This year, we are struggling having even a building that our students can come to. And so we have three students actively doing their schoolwork, but they're doing it from home. Now, I don't know if any of you have ever tried to work, or do schoolwork from home. I'm working on a master's program, and it is hard. It takes self-discipline, it takes dedication, it takes self-control, it takes focus, which are all things that we're trying to help these students learn. And so we are submitting an appropriation to the state to ask to help fund this program that we can provide for our students in Putnam County who greatly need it. Thank you.
Thank you. And last on my list, I have Lynn Robertson.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for being here this afternoon. I really appreciate it. I'm here to talk to you about State Road 20. I live on the most dangerous corner, which is South Ninth and Krill. A woman burned to death on my doorstep in an accident. Between 2018 and 2022, there were 294 reported accidents between South Palm and Reed Street. I'm requesting a very low-cost solution that would enhance public safety and also quality of life. At present, well, in 2017, DOT did a traffic survey at my request. They found that 10,000 vehicles per day were using the Krill, South Ninth, Reed Street, and reverse. It's 2023 now. There are a lot more vehicles, and dangerous vehicles, tanker trucks, dump trucks, gigantic trailers full of cars, portlets, et cetera. One incident, a truck ran into a school bus from Q Alley Roberts. I am first responder when there's a smash-up on my corner, and believe me, these accidents are serious. The people are in shock. Their vehicles are wrecked, and at a very minimal cost of $5,000 per accident, if you add that up, it's like $1.5 million that Putnam County visitors and residents spent in smash-ups on that two-lane road that goes through a historic and residential district. Rerouting from State Road 20 to 19 to 100 to 17 would be very easy and very low-cost. And at one point, I did a petition of neighbors and visitors. I stopped at 300 because I could've spent the rest of my life doing this, and everybody would say, yes, we hate this. So I quit. The other teeny little thing I'd like to mention is, please, 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 consider a spay and neuter clinic for animal control. I know we're getting a new building. My vet told me there was a room for euthanasia, but not spaying and neutering. At present, employees have to make two trips to the clinic in Gainesville to take those animals for their surgery. They come back, then they go back to pick the animals up. That's extremely inefficient. And very recently, one of my neighbors was ravaged by three roaming pit bulls. He had a psychotic break yesterday and was running around with a shotgun, because those dogs were returned to the irresponsible owner. So, thank you very much. My name's Lynn Robertson, and I appreciate your help.
Ms. Robertson, if I can just speak to you just for a moment on the issue on Highway 20. Certainly, we've been working on that for years.
I know, sir.
Let me, let me give you just a snapshot of what's occurred lately. We've recently met with the city, the county, the Sheriff's Department, Transportation Commission. Some of the signage that we have to move from 20 to 19 to 100 is inadequate. FDOT's addressing that as of this week, from what I understand. Should be new signage soon. We're also speaking to FDOT about speed limits through the area of Highway 20 when they come up out of Nine Mile. There are a lot of people going extremely fast. Part of the problem with truck traffic is that truck traffic, even speaking to the Florida Truckers Association, which I've, which I've done, they use Google Maps. Google Maps takes them through Highway 20 through Palatka, so the enhanced signage will help. We're working with the local law enforcement to try to make sure that trucks are aware of that through an education program. So there's many steps ongoing. So I hope you see some relief on that, because that's been an issue on, on my list for some time, to slow those trucks down, to move those trucks from 20 to 19 to 100. There's no room to expand beyond Palm Avenue going into Putnam County, because you have cemeteries on both sides. Probably not a good urban planning ideology years ago. But know that we are working on it, and that hopefully you'll see some enhancements soon.
Well, thank you very much, because I am not seeing this. In fact, the problem has increased.
Well, believe me, I've got video and pictures of trucks that have come through there as I've, as I've driven behind them, and I am on the Florida Trucking Association to make sure they spread that through their community of truckers and do something about it soon, as well as many of the personal individual owners of trucking, trucking sites in Bradford and Union County.
I'd also like to mention, just if your indulgence, that our city police seems to think that they cannot capture speeders on a state road. And I understand from a DOT person that this is completely incorrect. So perhaps a little, little help in that direction might be a good idea.
Sure. Thank you for that.
And once again, thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the speaker cards I have. So we will go to Representative Payne for some final comments.
Yeah, just, I'd like to just to close on a few comments. This is my last session. I wanted to go back to Mr. Hottelen and Mrs. Finch, the committee assignment that I have that I've worked on for years. And Tim, you may remember, one of the first things I did as a legislator was have a water form in Palatka. We brought numerous associations. We brought the FDIP secretary. We brought Water Management District in. We brought 17 legislators. So it's, water's been a passion of mine for day one. There are numerous studies going on with moat laboratories, with universities, with Central Florida, with University of Florida, with FWC. I speak to the Secretary at least once a month, Secretary of DEP, once a month. And if you recall, I was a sponsor and author of the Clean Waterways Act in 2020. We're just now implementing some of the rulemaking of that. There'll be a stormwater rule ratification potentially this year that's part of that nutrient loading. But some of the disparity and some of the comments we hear about ill grass, I mean, we talked about ill grass, and we talked about putting up what we used to call chicken wire over ill grass. And that grass grew in certain parts of the river very well, until it rusted and turtles got through the grass and ate it down to the Ry zone. So the ill grass issue is not only from the result of numerous things, nutrient loading, which, if everybody in Florida left, we still have nutrient loading in the, in the river because of legacy nutrients for years and years and years, because of different fertilizer applications, because wrong rates, because of all these nutrient loadings, some of it being stormwater, some of it being sanitary sewer overflows, et cetera, et cetera. Those things we're working on to the tune of, you know, $600, $600 million over the last several years from, in the governor's budget. There's, there's money there. We're working on it, but it takes some studies to figure out how to do this. The result of two huge storms, starting in 2017 through the last few years, that created tremendous flooding. You remember the flooding from Nicole? How long it takes for the water to vacate, that 27-foot elevation in South and Central Florida to the, to the upper St. John's? Part of the problem is nutrient loading that's there, water levels high, not enough sunlight for, for grass to grow. There's numerous things that are going on. So believe me when I tell you that we're working on it, and that it's gonna take a while to get it done. We didn't get this ditch overnight. We're still working on it. So don't, I appreciate your passion for the issue. You've stopped by the office numerous times, and we've talked numerous times about it. So just know that in my space, we're working on it. I'd be glad to give you this manual I created last year for educating of members. I did a workshop on water quality called 101 Water Quality to educate our members how important it's gonna be in future years for, for water in Florida, whether it's water supply or whether it's water quality. So we're educating members this year. We hope to have some pretty good policy, policy positions to continue that, that journey. So there, that's the piece I want to talk about on water, certainly transportation ag, or in the space that I have as chairman. But I want to take a few minutes to talk about a few things in Putnam County. And I think some of the numbers that you hear, that I can present to you today, will be staggering. And it's really of a review of what we've done for the last seven or eight years. I would say the most, the best compliment you can give any legislator is that they're a statesman. And I've worked with Senator Perry, and now Senator Hudson, and I can tell you, they are true statesmen. They represent their communities, they represent their constituents, they represent the good policies for the state of Florida. So it's been an honor to serve with them. Some of the things we've done in the last few years, just for Putnam County, we have brought $678 million to this, to this county through member projects, through educational enhancements, through transportation, through environmental funding. People don't realize that's well over half a billion dollars in seven or eight years brought back to Putnam County. If we looked at the district-wide, four years ago, I looked at the district-wide, working with our senators and our representatives in the district I had, it was over $1.5 billion in four years. So we've been very successful as a delegation in northeast Florida. We have people like Senator Hudson, Senator Perry, we've worked with. We've got Sam Garrison will be a future Speaker. My housemates that I lease the house with are speaker renter, Tom Leake, Chuck Clemmons. We've been very successful because we work, and we listen to you. We just don't go up there and pass policy bills without real, really deep thought and good consideration for northeast Florida. We know that springs protection is vital. That's our last frontier of water protection. But we're looking at also other water enhancements that we can do in northeast Florida. So if people are concerned about the fact that, that we see issues we're not addressing, I would invite any of you to go to the Florida House or Florida Senate website and look at the policies that we're working on and the pieces that we're working on every day. I'd just say the last thing is that, you know, I could go on and on. I'll get off my soapbox pretty quickly, but it's really been a pleasure to work with Senator Hudson. I've known him for a long time. I knew him when he was our senator the first time. He started out as our senator, and he's finishing up his legislative career with Putnam County, and I couldn't be more proud to be working with him and to continue to have an opportunity to work with, with him one more year, as well as our other members of our delegation. So, thank you, Senator.
Thank you, and I'll echo what you've said back, Representative Payne. You've been, it's been a pleasure working with you. It's sad, it's our last delegation, our last session, but I guess, I guess things will come into an end for us, but we have a little bit more work to do, because some people came up and said, hey, we got a lot done, but there's still some left. So we'll, we'll go up there and we'll finish strong for you guys and make Putnam proud of us. Without any objection, let's go ahead and move into our final stuff before we end. I nominate Representative Payne to be Chair of the Putnam County Legislative Delegation, without objection. We'll show that motion to approve. Representative Payne nominates me to be Vice Chair, without objection. We'll show that motion to be approved. And Representative Payne moves re-adjourned, without objection. Show that approved. We are adjourned.